Yep, just checking, waiting for sound. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Town Council of Monday, May 1st, 2017. Mike Hurley, if you could lead us.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Delores.
Councilor Bello.
Here.
Councilor Hammond.
Here.
Councilor Hurley.
Here.
Councilor Teeman is not here. Councilor Martino.
Here.
Councilor Ralph.
Here.
Councilor Spinella.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Berry.
Here.
Mayor Montanari.
Here. Thank you, Delores. My first order is a proclamation for National Bike Month. I think there's some folks here for that. So if you guys come up front here, I'm going to read this.
Guys, you guys. How are you?
Tom, Brad.
Hey, Tom.
We're also concerned about the airport and air quality.
Everything.
That's great.
Okay, good. Thank you. Welcome for coming to the chambers for this. Nice to have you here. I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans. And today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling as an environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness and quality family recreation. The education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is so important to ensure safety and the comfort of all users. The League of American Bicyclists and Independent Cyclists throughout our state are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety operation and education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities. The town of Weathersfield through groups like Bike Walk Weathersfield, Safe Routes to Schools, Central Connecticut Health District, and others are striving to make our community more bicycle and pedestrian friendly. So therefore, on behalf of the Town Council, I, Paul Montanari, Mayor of the town of Weathersfield, do hereby deem the month of May 2017 as National Bike Month as recognized by the League of American Bicyclists and put the town seal and fix my hand. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for being here.
You guys would like to say a few words? Or you're good?
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much for recognizing bicycling and pedestrians as part of the community. It's one of the things that makes our town great. You know, it's just a beautiful place to go riding. We do have Bicycle Festival on June 11th, and we invite everybody to go to that. That's at Hamner on Sunday in the morning. And I'm going to pass it on.
That was pretty good. We've been working closely with Ann Hartman from the Health District, so we recognize her involvement, and we're looking very much forward to working with the town in the future for future improvements.
Glad you're here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here this evening, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into public comment. Anyone here this evening to speak publicly about any topic of interest? Gus?
Good evening. Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. How are you doing tonight? Summer is here, huh? The stop sign again. This is not going to go away. Three weeks ago, I did go to the engineering department and I asked for any letters that, for permission to install the two-stop sign on Main Street and Churchill and Marshall, I guess. That was done a couple years ago. On numerous occasions, the mayor has told me more than once, I guess, that basically it's not up to them to put a stop sign. Everything depends on the state. Okay, I guess it depends on the state. But when I went to the engineering department, they spent some time, there is no record at all for them to get a permit from the state, nor as the Weathersfield Police Department said that a stop sign shall not be installed on the major street unless justified by a traffic engineering study. So I did ask for the engineering study. There was none, or at least they couldn't find it. This was about three or four weeks ago. I went back again this morning, and as soon as the gentleman saw me, he says, "Oh, I'm sorry, but I did not have the time to look into it." In the meantime, though, I also called the consultant, the engineer, and I asked, says, "You have installed two-stop sign on Main Street that were not there. Did you ever do a traffic engineering study?" Not that we're aware of, and everything else. So what is going on? A street like Main Street, you put two-stop signs, we're not even thinking about it at all, the effect of the traffic, and a small little street like Morrison Avenue, they need a stop sign, that I proved to you they need a stop sign based on the intersectional side distance and the speed, the 85th percentile, which doesn't really meet standards right now, between Tifton and Morrison Avenue. And yet, nobody cares about it. And by the way, it does not meet standards because of what the town has done relocating the road. Because the way was before, Tifton and Morrison Avenue, there was nothing wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Other public comment? Bob Young?
Good evening. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. I know we're narrowing in on the budget. I don't know what happened today. I know last Friday, they spoke, or I think it was last Friday, about the shortfall in tax return revenues. It came out late, they first spoke about $200 million short, and it came out to 400 and some million short. I don't know what they said today, because it was supposed to come out officially. I think that hopefully we'll hear from you folks on that. I know we, I've talked to you about various funds that the town has that I believe if we need to cut, these are places to cut. They're losers. They're losers to the town. And talk about losers. At our last meeting, there was a number of people that got up here and supported various sports in this town. Sports that you folks constantly pander, constantly fund. And I'd just like to quote a few sentences here and there from that discussion of last year. One was, "So much has been spent on other sports, and we should spend on lacrosse." If taxes go up, then I'm all for it if it's for the children. Lacrosse team, it's not much of an investment. Wonderful sport. Wants more lacrosse. We support swim and lacrosse. It's all about the future. Lacrosse brings together many people who would never meet. And I found that very interesting. And another one was, "The sport brings together new friends and gets us to new great places." There's a lot more. If that's all these people have, to want sports, I don't know how in the world you support that, Mayor. We have, if these guys, who, they were mostly guys that got up here and spoke, young men, if they're that lonesome, if they need companionship, they want to travel and go places, they have a thing called the U.S. Army. They could all join up and they could become great soldiers and go see places that none of us, well, none of us, many of us will never see. And they could have the greatest friends in the world. Just go. Not a word about the seniors in this town. Not one of these people spoke in any kind of respect to these old people who pay their taxes and use very little services. And I would hope that you folks would finally open your eyes and realize that you're only serving a minority by pushing all of this sports, all of this money, to this minority group in town. Go look at those funds. Go look at the football fund and see how much revenue came in over the last 14 years from Cottone Field. It's pathetic, Mayor. Someone mentioned about an investment in sports. This sports is throwing your money to the wind, and we need to spend our money on our highways. Hundred percent, or 98% of our citizens use the highways, and we only spend a million or some kind of number like that. And if we do any cutting today, or next week, or a week after for the budget, those will be areas that will get cut, and you'll keep funding sports. I don't understand why. Now you want to buy new turf. You want to finance it, because the folks who are in charge did such a poor job of collecting money, putting it on the side, when the old turf, when that existing turf that was financed by the citizens originally now needs to be replaced. You have no money. You have to now go out and borrow. And I called that, and I spoke about that last time. This is like chapter seven of the Bankruptcy Code, if that was an organization. And what we do see in those funds are dollars that the town also provides to those fields that are not included, and we're not even thinking about those dollars. It is nothing but a big sucking sound by providing all of this sports, which doesn't amount to much, Mayor, but you love it. Every one of you vote for it, and you like it. And, but I'd like to add, in looking at your budget book, if you're going to go out and buy new turf and finance it, why in the world are you not taking money from these funds, these special funds that we have? Special funds like park program, recreation program, social and youth program. They've got a lot of money sitting in them. Utilize that $1 million to pay for those, because you can do it. Any family who has an expenditure coming up is going to look into all of their bank accounts if they have any. These are bank accounts, in a sense, and you should drain them, especially anything that's regarding sports and recreation. These are the people that use these services. And also, you should put clamps on the collection of this money and the recording of this money. I don't think you have it downright. You have games that don't even show money. Yet, you've got expenses, up the yin yang, and this is costing every taxpayer in town. Whether they like it or not, they're going to have to pay for it or subsidize it. And I would think that with the situation we're in today, and I know Tom, I don't know if Tom's here, yeah, Tom's here tonight, he read a paragraph in here from your budget book, which I agree with him. You know, you say you want to hear from everybody. That's nonsense. Yeah, you hear from them, in one ear, out the other, and you do whatever in the world you want.
Thank you, Bob.
Hey, I appreciate coming up here, Mayor, you know? Come up here to talk to you once in a great while. Do you know what that number is from the state of Connecticut as to what your deficit is?
I did hear it was a little worse today. I didn't get an exact number, yes.
It was a little worse. I hope we hear some plans that you have, Mayor.
Thank you, Bob.
You know, it's folks like you, this council, that has put us in this kind of problem. We have idiots at the state level. Absolute idiots. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up front, yeah. How are you?
Hi, I'm Casey White, 91 Center Street. I want to make a quick comment about the budget, and I want to start by thanking all of you for being here, because I know this is not a financially profitable thing for you to be doing for yourselves. And I know that you give up a lot to do this for all of us. I want to talk about the library for a minute, and I really would love to see the library budget pass as it is. I know it's just over $400 over the last year's budget, last I heard. And I would love to see that stay as it is and not go any lower. The library is, overall, I mean, in the United States, it's an iconic institution for people to use, that everyone, people know that anyone is welcome to go there. I know it was one of the first town services I used when I moved here four and a half years ago from Massachusetts. My daughter, I dropped her off there with my husband as I walked in today. And not only people with small children, but people of all ages I see at the library. I see parents who are burned out with toddlers in a safe space where they can play when it's disgusting outside with the weather. I see people of all ages on the computers. I see children after school there. And there are lots of resources for people who can't make it to the library physically for whatever reason. And I just, I trust our library and our library board. Libraries don't, they don't have a ton of money in general that they're using. They stretch their budget pretty thin already. I have personally felt some of the effects of the state budget cuts with the libraries. I love to check out our library loan books, because lots of times, our library doesn't have as much as other libraries in the state do. And they have limited the number of interlibrary loan borrowing you can get from other libraries, because the state has caught the funding for that program. And, you know, that's not a huge hardship for me personally, but those things layered on top of each other will have an impact on people, especially people who don't have maybe as many resources as I have personally. So that's mostly it for the library. I just think it's something that we need to really protect as a public place that's safe and something that really defines our values as a town. And also, just to also put in a good word for the school budget, the gentleman was complaining about how children's programs don't bring in revenue. Children don't bring in revenue. That's true. So that's just how life is. But if our schools suffer from too many cuts, then our property values suffer, and then it does affect everybody in town. So, thank you, and again, thank you for being here and serving all of us.
Thank you, Casey. Tom?
Good evening. Tom Mazarella, 600 Walker Hill Road. I just wanted to share with you an observation that I made at the budget hearing on the 17th. At the beginning of the evening, Mr. Emmett presented a PowerPoint presentation summarizing the key points of his proposed $58 million budget. If you recall, there was three slides outlined requests not included in the budget. Towards the bottom of Slide 10, there was a line item that stated 50K for WHS Lacrosse full program is not included in the items in the budget. We then heard from about 15 speakers that spoke in favor of the lacrosse program and the benefits and importance of having that high school program in place. One speaker in particular made a statement that caught my attention. This individual was in favor of having a lacrosse program and strongly supported the approval of the Board of Education 2.94% spending increase, and also stated that he and others had been urged by the superintendent to attend the budget hearing and speak in support of his 2.94% budget. And then, in that if the Town Council approved the Board of Education budget, he, Mr. Emmett, would then have some flexibility to fund the lacrosse program. To me, that would support my theory that the Board of Ed budget proposal document is just all fiction. It's a bunch of over-inflated line items that, once approved by this council, they, the Board of Education, can spend that $58 million however they choose without any town oversight. In other words, it's flexible. I don't believe that's the case with the town budget. I think you put a budget in place and you adhere to that budget. And, yeah, occasionally, there are transfers between line items at the end of the year to cover shortfalls. But for the most part, you follow the budget that you make. Selling us a bill of goods is not the way to go. So again, I urge you to consider funding the Board of Ed budget at the state mandated minimum, $56,613,000. Also, keep in mind that this education funding in Weathersfield is more than the 58 or 56 million dollars that we're talking about. It includes the debt service for the high school, I think 725,000. It includes all of the maintenance for the fields and facilities that the town employees maintain. They cut the lawns, they do the lines, and so on. And now, we're also talking about a million or a million and a half dollars to replace the synthetic turf on the high school field. So it's more than 56 or 58 million dollars. It's much more. So please consider that when you finalize your budget in the next few days. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Other public comment? No, seeing no other. Thank you. Council reports this evening? Any council reports?
I was able to attend the Arbor Day ceremony Saturday at the Broad Street Green. There was a terrific turnout. The fourth graders read their poems and haikus and short essays and did a phenomenal job as they usually do. They helped to plant the tree, and there was also an award plaque that was put onto the Broad Street Green in memory of Fair Chase. So it was a very nice ceremony, lots of kids. It was a great turnout. It was nice to see. It was a beautiful day.
Thank you, Don, for making that. Mike?
I, along with Town Manager Jeff Bridges, attended the Hartford-Brainerd Airport Noise Advisory Committee. We meet quarterly to go over the flights that go over all of Weathersfield. You know, some people say it's just old Weathersfield, but you do hear from people who live on the west side that planes come in too low. The good news is, the airport authority is talking to pilots more often now. They're hearing the complaints come in from residents about the noise level, and they are going to start setting up patterns for which airplanes must first mark off before they begin their approach. And one in particular is the Putnam Bridge going over to Glastonbury, so that they can start the descent into Brainerd as far back as that bridge over the river, continue the river, and then come into the airport. Hopefully, that will clear up some of the confusion with the pilots when they come in and don't fly over old Weathersfield. And that's about it from that.
Mike, do you want to share anything about the meeting, the public hearing on the same topic?
Oh, yeah, I can do that as well.
That'd be great.
I think Tony, Amy, Mayor, myself, Mike, you were there as well, came to the meeting where the CAA, Connecticut Airport Authority, presented their plan for about 30, now 30 acres of tree clearing just south of the runway at Brainerd. There are a couple other areas as well, but the majority of the project affects residents in Weathersfield. It's a scaled-back proposal from what originally was proposed. I believe 40 acres was the original proposal. They had three options at the time. This was back in January. To do nothing at all was one. The FAA does not recommend that, obviously, for pilot and for resident safety. That is an option that cannot be, you know, completed. The second option was to clear-cut the 40 acres and just leave the undergrowth. There is a lot of concern with that. And then, the third and final option, which, you know, we worked together on, making sure that the CAA would approve it, is a selective tree trimming program where they would go in and take some of the old growth. And again, it's not old growth as in, you know, 100-year-old trees. I think the last time they did this was about 35 some odd years ago. The old-growth trees that are too high, there's concern that if they limb them or trim them too high up, they take out 25% of the tree, it would just kill the tree. So they would selectively, you know, cut the trees that they want to take care of. And for some of the other smaller trees, they would leave, because, you know, the approach coming in would be on not so steep of an angle that they could actually clear them. And pilot safety and resident safety is of concern, at least in my, you know, understanding of the project. I don't want to see all 40 acres or 30 acres now cut down completely. I think selective tree trimming would be the correct option for that. We do have nesting bald eagles, blue herons, a number of other wildlife. They are cognizant, CAA is cognizant of those and the impact on wildlife. But there are two proposals that were discussed, one being having somebody from the town be a monitor of this project. And I think we probably want to discuss that. I like the idea of, you know, having a town resident either be Corey from, you know, the tree warden, or somebody from, you know, one of the conservation commissions, or even, you know, talk about appointing somebody who may be interested from the public. I know, I see a couple people who were here that night, so I know there's a couple people who may want to volunteer for that position. I like that idea to monitor what is actually happening and, you know, follow, have CAA follow the requirements placed on them by, you know, Hartford, Glastonbury, and Weathersfield. The other proposal was to plant, replant a tree for every tree taken down. That's something I think Hartford has in their charter or in their clean air requirements. I don't know if we can do that exactly, but, you know, maybe we can look into some type of program where we could get low, slow-growth trees replacing some of those that have been taken down. Again, minimal impact, trying to limit the impact on the area, on the river, on the embankment, on the wildlife, as well as keep the safety of, you know, every pilot and his or her passengers, as well as residents in mind when we do this. All too often, it seems now, we're reading about airplane, you know, crashes, be it in East Windsor, Tweed, unfortunately, East Hartford. Some of them are, you know, pilot error, but some of them also are, you know, coming in an approach and, you know, just like in Meriden, clipping trees on takeoff. So those are some of the concerns that were raised. Hopefully, we can work with the public, the CAA and surrounding towns, to have a, you know, limited impact in that area.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Other council reports this evening? Tony?
There was a couple of meetings on EDIC since we last met, beginning of the month, because I couldn't report because of the budget hearing last time. But the EDIC has been working on an initiative to set up a website called The Great Elm with branches, offices, so people can turn around and go and find whatever information they need on any subject pertaining to the town, and they're moving forward on that. They're not duplicating what other people are doing. They're coming up with something that will feed over to the other websites to draw the information from them, so people have a one source to go to, to be able to find out anything on that. The town planner gave us an update on all the various empty properties in town, and one that was a great concern to people lately has been the status on the fund zone. And he informed us that they did go before inland wetlands and passed against them, and went before design review, and passed before them. And their next thing is, they're on the agenda to go to planning and zoning this week. He also advised us that 207 Church Street Leclerc's auction is in the process of submitting plans to planning and zoning for approval on that property. The Senior Citizens Advisory Commission met, and having on May 11th, they have an annual function everything geared to They have an annual function everything geared towards something, and this year's theme is spring cleaning. It'll be held at the Pitkins Center on May 11th from 1:00 to 3:00. At that, they will be collecting used books, which they'll turn over to the library for sale. Somebody will be there from Alliance Club to collect used glasses for recycling, old hearing aids. Police Department will be there to collect unused and outdated medications. And Dolores has arranged for a shredder to be there to take documents from people that they need shredded. They will also have speakers there that day to talk about recycling and how to get rid of electronics, including old cell phones, digital cameras, answering machines, computers, et cetera. They'll talk about the hazardous waste days and how you get rid of batteries, light bulbs, cleaning solutions, pesticides, and more, and paint. There's free admission to that. They will have refreshments and door prize that day, and it's being sponsored by the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. Public Works met and we reviewed the bids for artificial turf that the consultant came up with and gave them the okay to move forward with those bid to get quotes. They'll come back to us for review afterwards. They also told us about, we also got word about the problems with the condition of the roof at Stillman. The slate roof is beyond repair, so we're developing bid specs on that to move forward to see what we can do with that. Also want to commend the police on the recent promotion pinings for Lieutenant Mike Connelly, Sergeants Tony Gonzalez and Anthony Damonte, three well-deserving airmen. And it was a good function that day. CCHD had a volunteer recognition program in Rocky Hill to recognize all the volunteers within Connecticut Health District who helped out with both the flu clinic and emergency management. And it was nice to meet with some of those people there. And recently, last week, we had a ribbon cutting with a new dental group that moved into 55 Town Line. And a young lady there who's opening up a practice and is looking forward to serve the people of Weathersfield. She grew up in the state, was educated in the state, and wants to serve the state. So it was a real nice ribbon cutting.
All right, thank you. Steve?
I did attend the building committee meeting for the high school last Monday. Obviously, the project is winding down. Punch list items are continuing. I think they're down to eighteen after catching up a little bit over the April break. Commissioning issues, too, with regard to the systems. They're still having problems with one of the units with the heating and the cooling. I think I mentioned that at one of our last meetings. And so they're still looking into that to determine the source of the problem and see how that can be corrected. Essentially, it was Unit Three, which is near the library. The, there was a clog in one of the, or there was a drain in one of the showers in the locker rooms. That has been corrected as part of the punch list process. We're going to have the screening of the units, the roof units. It's on the agenda tonight, but that was approved unanimously as well. And the sound baffles in the pool are going to be put in in the summer. I think they'll be done by the end of July. So those had not been done earlier because of the activity in the school and swim team both fall and wintertime. But that'll be done this summer. And on the financial side, even with, assuming we approve the full screening, there will be approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the contingency. I believe that was the number. So, and that's it. Project obviously nearing completion, but we're moving, probably this summer it'll be fully complete is probably the best guess.
Thank you. Kathleen. Jody?
I just wanted to report on the Persons with Disabilities meeting that we recently had. There was a lot of conversation around just visiting some of the various group homes around town. Weathersfield Housing Authority Site Manager had reported that a lot of the folks are taking advantage of the senior center trips that we offer, which is really good news. With regard to seniors, there was question over the farmer's market at Solomon Wells House and the property being uneven, so they were going to reach out to Derek and just to talk to Public Works about, you know, helping out with some of the walkways because the seniors and some of the folks that have disabilities are not able to get there because of that. With Parks and Recreation, they reported about Special Olympics athletes who have participated in the Winter Games this past March, both Unified Snowshoeing and Floor Hockey. We received twenty-six medals and four ribbons, which is really a tremendous accomplishment. And currently, the athletes are training and they're going to also be talking about some new, young youth athletes and unified partners as well as adult athletes from a group home here in town that will be participating in track and field training. And one of the gold medalists, female alternate shot unified athlete, was selected to attend the World Games in Seattle, and that will happen next July. So that was really interesting and fun news to hear. And with regard to transportation, obviously, we approved the curtain contract. So they were just talking about ongoing communication back and forth to make sure that that's a suitable enterprise and that folks are getting what they need out of that. And the next meeting will be May 17th.
Thank you, Jody. Amy?
The Pension Committee met this evening. The forecast is looking good with modest growth, and the pension is currently just shy of ninety million dollars. It's up five and a half percent for this quarter. And also Budget and Finance Committee met last week with the Board of Ed to start reviewing the Board of Ed's budget, and we're going to continue the discussions with them.
Thank you. Kathy?
Youth Advisory Board's going to have a fundraiser this Thursday at 6:00 at Woodntapp in Newington for the camp fund. Tickets are thirty dollars, and all the proceeds go to the Weathersfield Camp Fund.
That's what time, Anthony?
6:00.
Thank you. Any council comments? Steve, Donna?
We received, the person, the counselors serving on the parade committee, the Memorial Day Parade Committee, received an email today from Sal Kucha about the passing of Larry Spellessi. That's a big loss for the community. Larry has been so integral in the parade and its existence for so many years, knowing it like the back of his hand. And we're going to miss having his presence. Services will be Thursday with the wake on Wednesday evening from 3:00 to 7:00, I believe is what the arrangement said. The other thing is, I did send out to a couple people, but wanted to let you know, May 6th, Saturday at 10:00 in the morning, Cedar Hill Cemetery is doing a tour, and it's called Weathersfield Notables. It's talking about the personages who now reside at Cedar Hill, like the wealthy seedsman Silas Robbins, Civil War Chaplain John Morris, Tuskegee Airman Lemuel Custis, and Connecticut State Prison Warden William Willard. It begins at the flagpole at the end of the drive as you go through the gates. There's a small admission fee of five dollars for non-members, and the Cedar Hill Foundation members are free. Their tours are really interesting, and this should be interesting to hear about all of those Weathersfield notables.
Amy?
I have a couple questions in regard to the Brainerd Airport. I was wondering who you would call about noise complaints and low-flying planes?
There's a standard number. I can get that out to the council members, but it's a published number that's actually for noise issues.
And so are they keeping track?
Yes. Every quarter, we get a report, how many people called, what planes they called about, what time of day, address of the caller, all those.
Okay. That's good to know. And then the other thing was about the Auction House property. Is that still before planning and zoning? I had heard that that proposal had been pulled.
I heard that it's not moving forward as it was proposed.
Okay. But it is still on planning and zoning's agenda for?
No, I think they pulled it for this week.
Oh, they pulled it for this week. Okay. Thank you.
My understanding. I'll check.
No, I heard the same thing. I think it was in response to some concerns from neighbors about the height application.
I just wasn't sure if it was going to be this week or not.
No, I think that pulled.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike?
Just to answer Amy's question, there is a Brainerd Airport noise. It's not a toll-free number, it's an 860 number, 860-566-2895.
Thank you.
Oh. Steve?
I was just going to make a quick comment on some earlier comments. There were some negative comments made about some of the younger speakers who came to our last meeting. And I think it's important to at least recognize or comment that it is not an easy thing for people from the public to come up and talk. And when someone from a high school sporting team or any of our younger residents wish to speak, I think they should be commended rather than criticized. So I just wanted to say that. And I listen to everyone, young and old, and I think we all do, but I don't think it's fair to pick on the youngest of our residents. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Okay. Jeff, anything?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dolores, anything?
You know, Tony's already talked about the shred event.
Okay. Very good. We'll move on to council action. I think we have one appointment from Counselor Martino and one from Counselor Hurley. We'll start with Mr. Hurley.
Starting with me?
Yes.
Okay. Appointment to the Transit District, Greater Hartford, to correct term ending, Peter Gardo, 60 Griswold Road, 718, 2016 to 1230, 2020.
Second. We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Obstacles? Tony?
We have an appointment to the Hartford-Brainerd Noise Advisory Committee to represent the Chamber of Commerce. It'll be Cynthia Greenblatt of 35 Broad Street for a term from 5/117 to 6-30-21.
Second. We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. No extensions or objections. We have no unfinished business or other business. We'll leave to 4A. We have a bid this evening on the white high school screen that Deputy Mayor spoke about. I think you'll introduce it.
Motion to approve PCO number 950 for $220,897.11 to purchase and install rooftop screens for Weathersfield High School.
Second. Motion of second. I know Sally's probably here, but you're going to take us through it, Jeff?
I'll start it off, and then if there's more questions. And Christine. What you see in your packet is the same presentation that appeared before the Planning and Zoning Commission, at which the plan was approved for the rooftop screening, which is an L that will traverse the entire front of the building, front meaning as you look, as you drive onto the site from Wilkett Hill Road, the entire front of that building will be screened along with the portion on the side. So $220,000. The landscaping, which was also part of the planning and zoning approval, is not part of this proposal. We'll come back this summer, probably for fall planting, to finish that up. But Rusty, the architect, is here to answer any questions regarding the particular of the screen. And the chair is here to talk about anything that's going to happen at the committee. And Sally's here to answer any other questions.
Very good. I know the council got the packet, which included visual depictions of the treatment proposal, as well as the cost analysis and the reports from the architect and individual line items. Everybody's here for specific questions on it. You know, we have had several meetings where we have discussed it, so I'm going to leave it open to council for questions and identify who you may wish to have answered. So.
Jeff?
Me.
Hoxie?
This big.
Well, no, the landscaping isn't part of this, so that would come out of the contingency that's left over? Or is that put aside?
Yes.
So it's not 160 contingency left? There is still more to do with that?
There's still more to do, but the landscaping amount is $20,000 roughly.
And is the color of the, it's probably for somebody up there, is the color of this screening going to be exactly how it's depicted here?
Yes, the color of the screens will match the metal panels that are on the building.
Okay.
Is that good at that one? Is that good?
Yeah, I'd like it to match.
Okay, that's good. Good call by you.
Jody?
I just wanted to know, how many screens is this getting us?
Actually, it's one continuous screen. They come in sections, but it's one continuous screen that's approximately 363 feet long. It's all along the east side of the building, and then it turns along the south side of the building. There are three larger rooftop units that are specifically screening in this particular configuration.
Somewhere toward the front of the building along Wilkett.
Right, right. So the entire length where it's coming along, which is the east side, as you come down Wilkett Hill and down the main entrance, that entire facade will be screened.
And the backside we're not concerned with, right?
No, those have been painted to match the color of the panels because they're much lower in profile. So it was deemed that we didn't really need to screen those. And the sightlines from those particular, those other units are, you know, the grade drops off, so it's not, you're looking from a lower elevation, whereas with Wilkett Hill, it's so much higher. So your sightlines are really, in some cases, almost right at the units themselves.
After these are installed, is there anything we have to do to maintain them, keep them up, replace them?
There will be. I mean, these are aluminum screens, they're insulated panels. Just like the panels, they would, over time, will need some maintenance. The finish on the metal is a Kynar finish, which has a 15-year, you know, minimum warranty on it. And what happens is, in time, if something, it's damaged by, let's say, a storm or something, then you'll have to do some level of maintenance on them. But overall, we anticipate fairly minimal maintenance. The connection points will be checked every now and then, just to make sure that because of, you know, especially if there's a storm and there's high winds, you want to come back and you go up there and make sure there's no effect from those. But they'll be no different than, you know, any maintenance that you would, that most rooftop screens would take.
Is this something that we can do in-house, or is that something we have to fend out for?
The installation? Oh, you mean the maintenance on it? Is, you know, some, what we anticipate is if there's any maintenance, if it's damaged, then you will need to get the vendor that installs the units to come up and replace them. They are easily replaceable, it's not a complicated process, but usually you want the manufacturers installer to install it so that you maintain any kind of warranty.
Thank you.
Donna?
Just, that brought up a question. With Tremco that we use for the roof maintenance and oversight, would they be able to add this to their list just to check when they're up there doing the inspection on the roof? Is that something that would be appropriate?
Yes. In fact, Tremco was part of our discussions with Rusty and the vendors when we were putting together the design for the screening. Our vendor from Tremco was there to make sure that the connections were appropriate. They'll also be on-site during the time when these are being put up, and we will put them as part of our roofing contract.
Okay. Thank you.
So just very briefly, I know one of the topics that we talked about in the early stages was the warranty of the roof itself, which obviously was important, and there was discussion about the weight-bearing capacity of potential screening. I know you addressed in here, in the content, Rusty, that that has been discussed. Could you just, hopefully very simply, not in great detail, but just overview how we have interface with the screening manufacturer, installer, and obviously the general contractor here, and the roofing warranty? How is that being addressed so that we have complete assurance that the warranty is not being placed in any peril, or that there might be something done that could potentially void the warranty as it sits today?
So we started with the process of making sure that the warranty on the roof would not be impacted. It's a Sarnival roof. The installer of the screens is actually also the contractor that installed the roofs. So they, there's going to be a seamless warranty, and we are getting that warranty from them. Again, it's, it'll be reviewed by Sarnival, and it's the same installer who installed the main roof. So there's no one to point fingers at but the one individual. We met with- We met with the roofing company, with the panel company, my engineers, myself, we all met in this process to make sure that the, we understood what the loads were, because the engineering didn't know what type of load capacity is transferred from the panels onto the roof structure. That was a major concern for us, because this is a 1956 building, and you wanna be sure that the structure that was in place would be capable of handling some of the loads, the lateral loads that would be coming from the panels into the, onto the building. In fact, at one point, we were hoping to look at screens that were maybe a 12-foot-tall screen. We knew that we could do a certain height on it, and we ended up having to compromise a little bit, because the structural analysis indicated that a screen that's more in the 10'6 range would be appropriate without having to further beef up the existing roof structure, because that's a cost we didn't wanna incur. And that's why, I don't know if you saw some of the pictures, we had some individuals up there on the roof, sort of trying to define where the top of that screen would be. That was the purpose of that exercise, so that we could, you know, get a pretty good idea of the height of the screen.
Thank you, Rusty, appreciate that. I think that's important for our community to know as well.
Just, and on that point of the design, one of the things is the actual screens themselves are raised off the roof for, obviously, snow and all of that purposes, but was it 18 inches or two feet above?
By code, we had to be a minimum of 20 inches. We're holding a 24-inch line, but the roof is tapered, so it goes up and down, but the minimum of 20 inches will be maintained for snowdrift purposes.
All right, and are they angled a little? Was that the?
No, the screens will be, you know, level, all the way across. It's the roof itself that has a slope to it.
Fair enough. Mike Rowe?
Thank you, Rusty. Two questions. First, is the, or maybe Christine, the $220,000 for today, does that include, or is that on top of the $36,000 we allocated in March for the design work?
It's on top of.
Okay.
In addition to.
And the $36,000, that included the landscape design, or?
The design, yes.
Right.
But not the actual land use.
I think that also included land use approvals.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, over $250,000 for the screening noise barrier, which I hope this screening does. I mean, everybody's talking about the visual effects of coming in or seeing it from the sightline at Wilkett Hill, but more importantly, for at least a dozen or so residents in the immediate area, does this have a sound-deadening capability to it?
What we discovered is that the sound was not coming from the rooftop units, but rather, it was coming from the exhaust that I used for the fume hoods that are part of the science program. Two of the three can be turned off, but one of them is serving prep rooms, and those have to be, by code, B24.7. So, what we did is, there's a 20-foot section of the panels that are specifically designed for sound absorption.
Oh, okay.
So, that's the approach to how we're gonna, and these units are, these panels are gonna be taller than that, than those exhaust units.
Okay.
Which will help manage as well.
Great, thank you. Other questions from council? Amy?
What's the timeframe for the installation? When will this be done?
We actually have allowed the contractor to move forward with the shop drawing phase. If all goes well and this is approved, we will then be looking at delivery of materials in June, with the idea that as soon as school's out, they'll start some work then. And the panels, the panels are coming from one manufacturer, the frames from another, but all the materials will be on-site towards the end of June, and the installation is anticipated to take about five weeks.
Thank you.
All good? Thank you. Thank you for the effort on all of this. Christine, I know you had to go through a few meetings, and we shook it up a little, but I like the end result, of course, and I think the screening depictions look very appealing, so. We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstentions? Thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Good luck. Approval of minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of the April 3, 2017 meeting?
Second. Any changes, deletions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstentions? Thank you. The meeting of April 8?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of April 8, 2017.
Second.
Any changes, deletions on that? That's the budget workshop.
The only concern I had in, you know, the registrar voters was only, where was it? Camille was the only one there. But Councilor Hurley did abstain, or, you know, make it, at least have it reflect that he recused himself, at least at that moment.
Sure.
For any possible conflict.
Very good. Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, any abstentions? Okay, and we had the special meeting of March 20.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 20, 2017.
Second. Any changes, deletions there? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstentions? And finally, the meeting of April 17, the budget public hearing.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of April 17?
Second. Changes, deletions there, folks? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstentions?
Stained.
Thank you. Public comment? Anybody that did not get a chance to speak? Tom, come back up.
Tom Mazzarella, 600 Wilkett Hill. Just a quick comment about the Stillman roof. I know a few months back, Mr. Bush said that the roof was shot, and I understand you have the roofing contract with Tremco, I believe, and I don't know if that building's covered under that. But it is a slate roof, and it's pretty highly specialized. Unfortunately, I have a slate roof on my house. It's not like an asphalt roof, it requires lots of maintenance, actually, twice a year. They have to get up there, check for loose slate, cracked slate, whatever. So, I'm wondering if Tremco had people that were qualified to determine that that roof needed to be replaced. Slate roofs typically last 200 to 400 years, so I think you should possibly look at that if you need to, you get an expert in the slate business, and have them survey the roof and advise the town accordingly. I know they had some slate fall off the roof, and it's a problem, ongoing problem with, you know, old churches and whatnot that have slate roofs. There are systems to catch any slate that does break loose, and I would think that's gonna be a costly job to replace that roof. I'm sure you're not gonna put slate back on it, that would cost an absolute fortune, but I think you should talk to Tremco and just get some assurance that they've had people that are qualified to evaluate the roof before we go spend a lot of money replacing the roof. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Other public comment? Yes, please.
Kevin Tedesco, 34 Island Road. Just a quick, put something on your guys' radar, there's a community connectivity program at the state of Connecticut, Department of Transportation, just to put that on the radar. You guys didn't apply for the first round, but there are construction funds that are coming up in the next round, hopefully by September. It's gonna be a grant program, up to $400,000, for infrastructure projects that will get you bicycle or pedestrian-related amenities. Could be anything from signals, road resurfacing, there's a wide range, so just to put that out there.
Thank you very much. Casey?
Casey, like anyone, Center Street. That program sounds great, let's do it. I was actually just about to comment on how I like the expanded island on State and Hartford and not the intersection by the farmer's market. That's great for pedestrians, it's unused road space, and I'm really happy the town expanded the island. And I really love that Weathersfield is a walkable town, so anything that the town can do to make small improvements to pedestrians, cyclists also, I think will really add value to the town, and is one reason why I chose to move here, because so many towns in the Hartford area are not really walkable, you know, at least beyond like a small block of the downtown area. I would love to have the crossing walk in front of the post office, there is none, and I have walked it with a stroller before, and I, you know, it's not, it wouldn't be a great situation for someone who's not extremely mobile, so that's my pedestrian comment for the night. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Yep.
I'm Ira Collins, 9 Avalon Place, and I'm just here to show my support for Board of Education budget, and I encourage you to accept it without cuts, or, you know, smallest, tiniest possible cut. And I just feel fresh to Weathersfield and Connecticut. I think school and library are what makes a town great, and so, that's all.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Deborah Cohen, 73 Church Street. I just wanna echo the sentiment that the budget for our schools needs to be kept as high as possible. Our kids are our greatest resource, and if we let them down, we're letting everybody, everybody down. I say that as a senior citizen, and I say that as somebody who does not have children, so it's not like I've got a personal stake in this. Well, thank you, Mike. So, I just wanna put that thought out there. Thank you.
Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. As I was saying earlier about the sports and the revenues, when we had Cottone Field up here 14 years ago, it was we were going to get this, we were gonna get this turf on there, we were gonna make money, this was going to, great things were gonna happen in our community, and I don't really see it happening, Mayor. As I look at the records, the dollar amounts look poor, and it doesn't appear, when you look at the dollars, and you know what they're charging to get in, I think it's two bucks for kids and five bucks for adults, when you start looking at this, there's not a lot of people going. There might be a couple games when there's an overload, otherwise, there's not a great support in this town. When you look at the revenues, and I really believe, for years, we've been supporting something that is nothing else but a drag on us. I know you don't like hearing that, but it is. I've asked the town manager three, a month ago, to provide me with information regarding all the usage of these fields, and I still haven't received it, I don't know why. He tells me he doesn't have enough help.
I don't.
It's an Excel spreadsheet, or it's some kind of a, some kind of a spreadsheet, if someone's keeping it up. And if nobody's keeping it up, then you got a problem. And if you don't, it should be readily available.
You want what you want, when you want it, in a fashion you want it in, and it's not how we do it.
What fashion is it in?
It's in a munish fashion.
Give it to me in a, in a, what do they call it? Ah, I can convert it.
Then we won't have any information for what the Board of Ed collects for their programs. All we have is town programs.
I want your town.
I know you do, and I responded to your email this morning.
Thank you, I haven't turned my email on today.
Maybe you should.
I leave work, I leave for work early in the morning, and I just got home, okay?
You bet.
But, the fact is, we have losers. We also have other losers in this town, Mayor. And I've talked about this in the past, we have the Standish House, a house that we collect $100 a year for, and some group who pays the $100 a year rakes in, what, 40-some million, $40-some thousand dollars a year. Plus, we take care of any cost over $3,000 that they have to put up, from what I recall from the agreements. We also take care of the lawns, we take care of the snow, we take care of any repairs.
Not on standing.
We take care of roofing. You having the budget, you having the budget to paint and scrape, $25,000 for the Standish House. You also have a, I don't know if you ever decided what that 452,000-dollar generator was?
It was a typographical error.
Typographical error. Yeah, you did say that the other, two weeks ago, but I thought you would've found out where it really belonged. You mean it was in there, and you have to zero it out?
Yeah, we're gonna zero it out when we see the published budget.
Okay, good. Glad we caught it. But the fact remains, we have losers in this town that we should be looking at and getting rid of. I believe the Standish House for one. We should give it back to the Standish family and let them worry about it. We should look at the Kinney Center and do something with that. We want a room down there, we pay X amount of dollars for a room at the Kinney Center, from what I've seen in some of these records. Yet, we own it, we get $100 a year. We take a hell of a slap across the face because of earlier deals. You should sell it to those people who are in there. Let them become taxpayers and owners, and let them take care of the property. Why should we? And that goes with the Standish House as well. That goes with that little academy down there. Sell it to those people who are using it. Sell it to them for fair market value, not giveaway stuff like you normally do. $100 a year rent. Incredible, incredible. Anyway, I hope that you folks will consider reducing the Board of Education's budget. I've looked at that more than once. I think you have a lot of items in there that you can reduce it by, and we should reduce big time, because all these years, there's been no reductions, they've been increases. And look where we are today. Look at the condition of the state of Connecticut. Look at, it ripples right down here, Mayor, and you come and you talk and put up a budget for 6-point-some percent increase. I mean, who in this, who in this time would do such a thing? Oh, I know, you have all kinds of fixed costs. Fixed costs that you promote. Fixed costs that you go out and borrow more money, and they become fixed cost. We don't get to vote on those smaller deals. Oh, yeah, we get to come up here, but your minds are already made up. The citizens should really know how bad this is. And it's not party, one party versus another, it's both party. The party is the worst thing we have in the state of Connecticut. We shouldn't have party, people should be on their own if they're in politics. That makes them more accountable. Here, doesn't work. But anyway, Mayor, I wish you well on coming up with a new budget, I hope it's less than zero, 10% less would be nice. We've been hammered year after year, and it can't continue, just can't, Mayor. You know, I understand you're supposed to be a businessman, I mean, is this how you would run a business? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other public comment? Nope, seeing none. We, I'm gonna get a motion to adjourn a recess to a budget workshop with members of the board.
Motion to adjourn a recess to a budget workshop?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Are we gonna start?
We're gonna go in there, Tom.
Come.